The recording of this hearing will be posted on the massdoc of 2050 C C P page. Within the next few days, we will start the hearing with the presentation followed by the opportunity to provide verbal feedback. Verbal questions will not be invited during the presentation itself, but participants may type questions in the Q and A panel, which can be answered by our team of panelists. If you have a logistical question, please let us know in the chat. Anything written in the chat or in the Q and A is not considered a written comment, so please keep that in mind. If she is ready now, I will be handing over to the E A's undersecretary of Energy and Climate Solutions Judy Chang to officially begin this hearing.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Judy Chang and I will be presenting today on the 2050 Clean Energy and Climate Plan. First of all, I want to thank you for joining this public hearing. We're very grateful to have such robust participation in the last two public sessions. We had one last Thursday and another one last Friday. And even after a long weekend, I'm happy that some of you can be joining today. The proposal in this presentation builds on the Clean Energy and Climate Plan for 2025 and 2030. That were, that was published in June of 2022 earlier this year. Those plans focused on the medium and long-term goals of the strategies to achieve net zero in 2050. And this plan that we're going to talk about today, Climate Plan for 2050, is focused more on the longer-term objectives and how we achieve both the obligations, the two obligations under the climate law. Next slide, please. So in this presentation, I will be covering the requirements under the 2021 climate law, the limits and sublimits for 2050, the sector-by-sector goals and strategies covering the sectors you see on the screen here. And included in that, I will talk about a few very important cross-cutting and enabling policies that are not sector-specific. Then I will talk about, share with you what our next steps are. At the back of the slide deck that you can either download or receive via email, has some key terms and acronyms that will be used in this presentation. These explanations are meant to help you understand and review the presentation, both during the conversation we're having today and after the hearing. I would try my best to not use too many acronyms, but in the situation that I do use them, you know, there will be some explanatory slides at the back of the deck. Next slide, please. The 2021 climate law requires us to publish a roadmap, which we are referring to as the Clean Energy and Climate Plan, of how the Massachusetts as a state will achieve its greenhouse gas emissions reduction. The law had set a few requirements and you can see on the slide. It had said 50% reduction by 2030, 75 by 2024, and greater or at least 85% and achieve net zero in 2050. It also had set, EA, it had also set a requirement for EA to set emissions limit for the interim years for the every five years. It also requires the Energy Environmental Affairs Secretary to set the sublimits for the following sectors: electric power, transportation, commercial industrial heating and cooling, residential heating and cooling, industrial processes, natural gas distribution service, and any other sectors that the sector may deem important. And the law sets and codified natural working land, the definition of natural working land and requires the Energy Environmental Affairs to track carbon flux in our natural working land and set goals to reduce the emissions and increase carbon sequestration. It also requires the development of a natural working land plan within each of the climate plans, which we did for the 2030 plan and we will do so as well for the 2050 plan. The climate laws are required Energy Environmental Affairs to set numeric benchmarks and track emissions reductions through solutions and improvements used to achieve statewide emissions limits and sublimits. Next slide, please. As I already discussed in the previous slide, we have two very specific targets for 2050 in the 2021 climate law. The first one is to reduce statewide greenhouse gas emissions by at least 85% relative to the 1990 baseline. Simultaneously, we also need to achieve net zero emissions in 2050. Because we're sitting here in 2022, looking out to 2050, there are significant uncertainties around the best approach, the least cost approach to meet the statewide emissions limit and to achieve net zero emissions. However, we want to be as specific as we possibly can today in setting out a plan for the state to reach those objectives. There are some uncertainties that's worth noting that are listed on the slide here and we will be discussing them in the plan itself. These uncertainties include technological evolution and development and the relative costs of the different technologies to achieve net zero and to achieve greenhouse gas emissions reduction. There are uncertainties about adoption rates of the different solutions and technologies. There are uncertainties around future greenhouse gas emissions accounting and reporting. Massachusetts rely on international and national standards for accounting and reporting greenhouse gas emissions from various different sectors. And some of those are evolving as the sciences improve. And we will adopt the best sciences available as we update our greenhouse gas emissions accounting and reporting. There are also uncertainties associated with carbon sequestration and ability to reduce and absorb carbon from the atmosphere or from various different industries. And one thing that's not listed on the slide, but it's also an increasingly challenging uncertainty is the uncertainty associated with siting and permitting various different infrastructure needs needed for decarbonization. Next slide, please. This slide covers the 2050 emissions limits. We are still working on the, on fine-tuning the limits that we're going to set for 2050 in each of the sectors. So these numbers will be refined over the next few weeks before we finalize this plan. But I don't anticipate them to change very much from the proposed or the, or the draft numbers that you see on the slide. The first column also shows for reference the 2030 emissions sublimit set in the 2030 plan. Each of the sectors are laid out in the rows of the table with the power sector, transportation, residential heating, cooling, commercial industrial heating, cooling, industrial processes and natural gas distribution, the sectors that are specified in the climate law. We will be talking about them in some ways on an aggregate level primarily for buildings. Because the heating of buildings and for residential and commercial buildings are similar in the plan that we need to have to achieve the emissions reduction. Also on this table are the examples of the emitting resources from each of the subs, each of the sectors and examples of methods to reduce those emissions. Next slide, please. Before we get into the details of the policies for each of the sectors, we want to paint a picture of what 85% greenhouse gas emissions reduction in 2050 will look like. Essentially, we're transforming our economy to one that's much lower in greenhouse gas emissions and that requires significant changes in the way we do things. The way we transport ourselves, the way we heat our buildings and the electricity we consume. For transportation, to achieve the emissions reduction there, we, we need nearly all passenger vehicles and most medium heavy duty vehicles to be electric. For the remaining portions of the transportation that's difficult to electrify, we anticipate that biofuels and hydrogen may help and will be the fuel used in the sector. We also anticipate, and we see this in our young people today, that driving or having personal vehicle to drive around will be reduced. So total driving would be stabilized as Massachusetts residents increase and our our economy grows because residents will have access to alternatives to personal vehicles. For our buildings, to achieve a significant reduction by 2050, all buildings that are built, all new buildings that are built from this day forward will have tighter envelopes and majority of the buildings in 2050 will be heated and cooled by electric heat pumps. We will also be standing up a clean heat clearinghouse that centralizes technical assistance and connect all customers to decarbonization solutions so that there are information and guidance for all the consumers that are pursuing decarbonization solutions. For the electric power sector, almost all of the electricity consumed in Massachusetts will need to come from the renewable and clean energy resources. And remember, because transportation and buildings will be mostly electrified, it is extremely important that we grow our electric supply and distribution system to accommodate all of those electrified resources. To electrify that using clean energy, one of the resources that are, that is relatively new is offshore wind. And offshore wind will become one of the primary resources in New England's electricity system along with a diverse portfolio of other existing clean energy while we keep our grid reliable and resilient. For non-energy industrial sectors, we do anticipate that hydrofluorocarbons and S F six will be eliminated from cooling systems and some industrial emissions will be mitigated by carbon capture. We also anticipate by 2050 or in 2050, most of our existing natural gas pipelines are likely to be phased out and replaced by fossil fuel alternatives. And solid waste disposal is reduced by at least 90%. In the next five slides, we'll be talking about each of the sectors, starting with transportation. Next slide, please. So each of the sectors look, has a page like this or has a slide like this. We first cover on the left-hand side of 2025, what's already included in the 2025, 2030 Climate Plan. And then on the right-hand side, we'll discuss the extension of the current policies and any additional policies. I will focus your attention more on the right-hand side because I'm not going to read through and discuss the, what has already been presented in the 2030 Climate Plan. For the transportation sector, the extension of our current policies include implementation of our advanced clean car and clean truck standards, which will require manufacturers to increase the number of zero emission vehicles on the road. We will provide continued assistance for consumers through both E V incentives and charging infrastructure with a particular focus on supporting low-income residents and fleets that are important for equity and public health, such as school buses, vehicles for hire and delivery trucks. The state will also expand our investments in alternatives to personal vehicle travel by improving transit service, investing in housing near public transportation and expanding bike and pedestrian infrastructure. As we look past 2030 or as we start thinking about what's needed beyond the extension of current policies, we need to think about how to help consumers retire legacy internal combustion vehicles and begin to tackle some of the sectors that we know are going to be challenging to electrify, such as interstate freight and air travel. We also need to work with our electric side or electricity side of the business and think about how to commit more consumers with smart charging through either rate design or smart charging mechanisms so that we, as all the transits move to electric vehicles, people are not going to charge at the same time driving up the cost of our electricity system. We also need to consider additional fuel policies to promote clean biofuels and hydrogen in difficult to electrify sectors or subsectors such as aviation, marine and long-haul trucking. Next slide, please. As I have presented for the 2030 plan, I'm very grateful for the Commission on Clean Heat, which consists about 20 plus experts of different parts of the building segment of our economy coming together and discuss the importance and the potential policies necessary to implement clean heating systems for all of our buildings in the Commonwealth. This group of people have dedicated a lot of time since the beginning of this year to talk about potential policies. While they're still deliberating and working on the recommendations that they will have for this administration and the following administration, here are some highlights of the likely recommendations coming from the Commission on Clean Heat. The first one is to implement a clean heat standard, which is a regulatory approach that's similar to our clean electricity standard or clean energy standard or renewable portfolio standard to meet the building's emissions supplement through electrification and energy efficiency. One of other recommendation may be to instruct utilities to conduct coordinated planning for targeted natural gas decommissioning and electric distribution and transmission system investments. To develop a clean heat clearinghouse as a center point of contact for consumers for all clean energy solutions. Integrating the good work that MassSafe has already been doing for a number of years in deep weatherization and other energy efficiency measures, but combined with that, other incentives and programs and technical assistance for solar investments, heat pump investments, E V charging and energy storage. Another recommendation includes establishing a climate finance mechanism to de-risk and mobilize and attract private sector investments for the building sectors pursuing deep decarbonization efforts. And just as importantly, conduct a comprehensive public campaign, climate campaign and education campaign and implement community level engagement to build momentum and scale for building electrification. Next slide, please. For the power sector, while we say that all of these policies are undergoing and going, we're already implementing the current policies and the, all of the proposals for 2050 sitting here in 2022 are really extension of the existing policies. All of this work is actually challenging and requires continued effort for coordination and setting directions for the region. For example, by 2030, we need to develop successors to procurements for financing large-scale clean energy projects such as using a wholesale electricity market mechanism called the Forward Clean Energy Market. We need to continue to support offshore wind development and deployment by collaborating with regional partners and federal partners to make sure that we have sufficient amount of long-term lease capacity and advanced floating offshore wind technologies. And then in addition to offshore winds, to catalyze the development and continuation investments in solar and storage technologies. I want to make a note that we have heard from stakeholders loud and clear that the development and deployment of solar resources have to take into consideration the valuable land that they use. And this is a continuing of the hard work that's necessary to strike the balance between deployment of solar and protecting our land and forests. We need to work with our regional partners, all the sister states in New England and Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and U S Department Energy to reform the way we conduct transmission planning for the region and to make sure that we have a sound cost, the sound way of allocating the cost for transmission and to make sure that the siting and permitting process allows for and allows for the build-out of the necessary transmission infrastructure needed for the electrification of our, of our economy. We need to modernize electric distribution and as you probably just saw that there is an announcement for Department Public Utilities for one of the first major investments in our distribution system, electric distribution system to facilitate the electrification and other decarbonization strategies, including deploying advanced meter infrastructure. We'll continue to do this work with the recommendation from the Grid Modernization Advisory Council that will be standing up as soon as we can. And we need to examine the state's rate design, sorry, the rate design that promotes efficient clean energy use while ensuring that such designs are widely understood and protects consumers. And again emphasizing siting, ensuring that siting and offshore wind and transmission, distribution, infrastructure and really all of the electric sector infrastructure considers the impact on environmental justice communities and really all the communities in the state. Next slide, please. The Commonwealth continued to promote energy efficient upgrades and electrification in industrial buildings throughout and through the use of Mass Safe program. Meanwhile, the federal government is moving forward with phasing out the production and the use of hydrofluorocarbons in compliance with the American Innovation and Manufacturing Act of 2021. Mass Development, I'm sorry, Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Mass D E P, is moving forward with their updated solid waste plan, master plan for 2030 that seeks to reduce the solid waste disposal by 90% by 2050. The Department of Environmental Protection will also execute recommendations from the future solid waste master plan that are produced every decade. The new item here is to evaluate the findings from the most recent initiation of ten town pilots to make sure that the future of our gas infrastructure considers the declining use of natural gas and to protect our consumers. And if appropriate, through the evaluation and the findings from the ten town pilot, work with legislature to recommend broader policies around the future of gas systems. Next slide, please. For natural working lands, we want to continue to protect, manage and restore their capacity to remove and store carbon now and through 2050 and beyond. We're increasing our natural working land conservation commitment to at least 40% of Massachusetts land and water be permanently protected from development by 2050. To accomplish this goal, we'll leverage recent federal funding sources. To increase carbon sequestration capacity, which is an important extension of an existing policy that's articulated in the 2030 plan, we need to seek not only domestic or in-state resources for carbon sequestration, but we also need to explore other approaches to sequester the carbon, the residual carbon that's from our economy. But domestically or in, in the state, as we increase carbon sequestration capability, we're increasing our tree planting commitments, a tree planting with a commitment to have at least 64,400 acres of new riparian and urban trees by 2050. To allow natural working lands to function, to continue to function as natural working lands and to protect future nature-based carbon sequestration potential, we need to develop and we will develop methodologies to quantify greenhouse gas emissions implications of large-scale land clearings and explore potential options for mitigation. We also continue the state's commitment to climate smart practices in forest and farm management, in long-lived durable wood product recovery from harvested timber and wetland restoration. All of these were discussed in detail in the Climate Plan for 2025 and 2030. Next slide, please. Just as important as the sector-specific policies, we recognize that there are specific cross-cutting and enabling policies that's necessary to achieve the emissions reduction necessary to reach net zero in 2050. The first one is workforce development. Just as we have to develop our electricity infrastructure, we need to develop our workforce infrastructure. To have the breadth and the depth of personnel needed to manage the energy transition and to do so in an equitable way, we need to invest now and in the long term in our workforce. Of course, Massachusetts stands and is well poised in training our workforce. But like never before, this is an essential component of our climate plan. We must continue the various efforts that we have underway in coordinating with key stakeholders to align training with present and future needs in mind. But in addition to those, we also need to focus on adding a state career cluster focused on clean energy up and down the scales of our education system. We'll plan to build on our various internship and workforce training program by launching a climate service corps to bolster the pipeline of climate critical occupation and to promote the interest in young people. We want to work with our labor unions. We want to work with our labor unions to assist in training and retraining to ensure that the workforce has the skill level necessary to meet the energy transition in the coming decades. I cannot over emphasize the importance of workforce development. While in the short term, we already see and feel the short shortage of workforce and we feel it very strongly both at the state and then private sector. This will become crucial in achieving our net net zero in 2050. Because if we don't have enough people to help us install the heat pumps that we need to install the charging stations we need, we will not be able to achieve the goals that we set for ourselves. So it's really important for us to start thinking about how to transition the existing curriculum and to advance and grow the curriculum to attract not only the existing workforce, but the young people to join the efforts in decarbonization. For innovation, Massachusetts stands again and at the forefront and is very well poised to not only educate the future workforce, but to innovate and export new technologies to the rest of the world in the world of combating climate change. We need to continue to invest and expand in our university's ability to transfer the technologies innovated in in our universities and colleges to better build this capacity for the world at large. From a climate leadership perspective, we need to expand and has already started to expand our leading by example program to support 2050 ready existing building retrofit projects at state facilities, really using the state's role in setting an example for rest of the state. We also need to increase our efforts and really listening to the stakeholders. This is really a strong voice that has come across from really all many stakeholders. Our state agencies need to coordinate with municipalities and other regional entities on net zero planning, capacity building and implementation, and we need to emphasize to the public the reasons why decarbonization is important and the programs there are to support the decarbonization efforts across the state. Next slide, please. Future fuels, sustainable bio-based and synthetic fuels play a role in our portfolio for 2050 climate solutions. But today, we do not yet have the appropriate accounting to really understand their impact. And that extends back to the life cycle analysis associated with these bio-based and synthetic fuels. Thus, we propose the Mass Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, consider whether changes are needed to the greenhouse gas emissions inventory convention or emissions accounting guiding principles for bio-based and synthetic fuel combustion emissions and to decide whether to include these emissions into the baseline and to do a total emissions accounting going forward. And just as important as all the other policies to ensure equitable and just transition, the state will begin to develop a plan to commit investments into environmental justice communities. We need to track and make sure that we set goals that certain percentage of the clean energy and climate investments either directly or indirectly benefit our EJ communities and population. Next slide, please. Today is the third oral presentation and hearing for this 2050 plan. And I will, you know, shortly here be listening to your comments and really hear what you have to say and and gather your feedback. We will continue to accept written comments to the proposed emissions limit, sublimits, the goals and the policies that you you just previewed through October 21, 2022. You can email us at gwsa@mass.gov or you can click on a portal on the website to submit your written comments. We will then review and synthesize all of the submitted comments and update this plan and draft the plan to be submitted to the legislature and posted by January 1, 2023. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Patrick and he will open up the lines for your comments. And I will take my seat and listen to your comments and hear what you have to say. Thank you very much for your attention and I look forward to hearing your comments and receiving them in writing as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Undersecretary Chang. The hearing aspect of this session will be conducted so that participants can have the opportunity to provide oral comments. Please click on the raise hand function if you are joining by Zoom and then you can unmute yourself once we call on you. If you're calling by phone, please press star nine and then you can press on a star six to unmute yourself when we call on you. This may take some time to get through each verbal comment, so please be patient and respectful. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will ask you to unmute yourself and begin speaking. We also would like to note that each person that wishes to provide verbal comment can only speak once and please keep your testimony to under two minutes. With the logistics taken care of, I will now begin asking for testimony. Our first hand is Susan. I'm gonna allow you to talk now. Susan, if you can unmute yourself. Okay, Susan, I'm gonna put you on the back burner for a second so we can keep moving. Next, I'm gonna call on Douglas.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Doug Presley. I'm a Policy and Regulatory Affairs Manager with Dandelion Energy. We're one of the nation's leading providers of home geothermal heat pump systems. Our mission is to make geothermal heat pumps so inexpensive and easy to install that we enable a widespread shift from fossil heating to renewables. I want to highlight three key ways that geothermal heat pumps can help meet our 2050 building decarbonization goals. So first, geothermal heating is the single most efficient way to heat and cool buildings and therefore has the lowest operating costs. A typical Massachusetts resident will save 47% in their annual energy costs when switching from heating oil and air conditioning to a geothermal system. Second, heat pumps have significant emission reduction benefits as well. The impact of switching from natural gas to a geothermal heat pump is roughly the same as switching from a gasoline to an electric vehicle. So that's a pretty big impact. And then the third point is that geothermal systems support the electric grid by minimizing peak demand and actually lower the electric costs for all of the rate payers. So significant benefits for society in addition to the individual homeowners. To maximize these benefits for Massachusetts residents, we would encourage the 2050 Clean Energy and Climate Plan to establish specific ambitious targets for geothermal heat pump installations. The state's gonna need to install over 80,000 geothermal systems by 2030 and 900,000 by 2050 to keep pace with the required progress towards decarbonization. And one of the key policies to support this growth would be to extend the existing mass save prescriptive geothermal rebates to also apply to new construction. New constructions, the optimal time to install geothermal systems and reduce the overall total costs and extending that mass save rebate to new construction would be a strong signal of support for geothermal systems. We're excited about the progress in the market of geothermal in Massachusetts and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna call on Rayner.
Hi, my name is Reiner Kerr. I'm an energy technology economist. I spent 45 years in the energy industry and taught graduate level economics, energy economics, and have been working with faculty and students for several years to understand climate policies. So the proposed emission limits are not supported by a practical or economic decarbonization approach. In fact, when we model the outcomes, the further development of wind and solar will be extremely expensive, ineffective and will backfire by causing our nuclear plants to retire prematurely because of the market effects. So several reports recently completed by ISO New England and MIT and others clearly show that replacing flexible and reliable gas generation with inflexible and variable wind and solar will not support a reliable power grid. And even with extensive installation of battery storage, and this needs to be understood before we impose limits that seek that kind of a decarbonization pathway. We currently have enough inflexible solar and wind generation and nuclear generation that's close to satisfying our minimum system loads. As we increase that, we create more and more occurrences where inflexible generation exceeds demand. And this can result in negative pricing in the power grid. And the negative pricing means that generation like our three nuclear units which currently avoid 14 million tons of carbon dioxide per year will end up losing a lot of their annual revenue and will be unable to continue to operate. So by 19, I'm sorry, by 2030, despite an investment of over $60 billion in renewables to seek the carbon reductions, the early shutdown of our nuclear plants will more than offset the reduced carbon emissions from the new solar and wind and backfire so that we would have more carbon emissions then than we do now. So the decarbonization pathways are extremely expensive and solar and wind generation, if you look at the unsubsidized costs are two to 10 times as high as power from gas generation that we have that sets our wholesale prices. So as we try to double the existing wind and solar generation and add six gigawatts of offshore wind, those investments will impact our electric rates. And what we haven't seen from the documents associated with the Clean Energy Plan is an analysis of the costs and rate impacts and and that's an important part of understanding the impacts of your proposed framework. The other thing is that electrification will end up causing massive power shortfalls by 2050 because it's impractical to add additional flexible generation in that timeframe without using natural gas to avoid the kind of shortages that we see in Texas and California where the commitment to renewables hasn't been matched by increases in flexible generation. So we'll provide our written comments and make our report available to the CECP Advisory Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna call on Brian Campbell.
Hi, Brian Campbell and Rayner Kerr's comments were spot on. Recently, our Secretary of Energy, Gresham, made the following comment. We are on war fooding. We are in an emergency. We have to responsibly increase short term oil and gas supply. Well, we definitely need a pipeline from the Marcellus Shale region in Pennsylvania to New England. And that could be used to help our allies in Europe. This is what the the region is still heavily relied on liquefied natural gas inputs. And that's not a sustainable, says Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Chairman, Richard Glick. So we're supposed to be the ISO, the independent service operator is supposed to be a market based operation. Well, because we closed Pilgrim, Vermont Yankee and Brayton, four gigawatts of capacity, we didn't improve our pipelines to bring in gas. So now we're in danger this winter and the FREC has made exceptions for us luckily that we're gonna be able to buy up a bunch of oil and we're gonna burn it in our peakers like the Cape Cod plant that just got a new peaker in 2019 to replace Pilgrim, a 333 megawatt one. Three, 333, excuse me, megawatts. And I just another thing about the plan is it relies on 60,000 acres of new industrial solar between, and that's the minimum. They also had a case of about 125,000 acres. And where do we get those solar panels from? Well, they come from various countries. But the polysalicon that makes them is coming from the slave is manufactured by the slave labor of the Uighurs in China. And for us to morally support that and for this administration to take down the Trump tariffs on solar panels and kill our own cellular industry in the process is and using the Defense Production Act to do it is just
That we're trying to stick to two minutes on the testimony. If you want to take a few seconds to wrap up and then also
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Next, I'm gonna be calling on Nancy. Nancy, if you're able to unmute yourself and begin talking. Okay, Nancy, I'll circle back to you. Next, I'm gonna call on Wendy.
Hi, most of my comments are in and I'll write them up too, but in the cross cutting and enabling. I'm an architect in Western Mass and also climate activist. I have a suggestion for targeting buildings for for energy reduction by using the energy use intensity of buildings. So buildings with a high energy use intensity might get funding to reduce their, you know, to retrofit first. Also, I agree that the workforce is top, top of mind because we can't, you know, people in India can't rich for our buildings. We need people here. The trades are, you know, we just need more people in the trades for everything. So that should be already in the works and started as soon as possible. Also, I don't understand why the Climate Service Corps would wait almost 10 years to to get that started. I think that's could start sooner than that. Possibly providing assistance for disposal of HFCs, safely disposing the the coalants that are getting phased out. I also have promoting shave the peak. I know that was successful on at least few of the days this last summer and also promoting local beef instead of CAFO beef that helps the environment and reduces emissions. Also, the MSBA, I wonder, I know they're an independent agency, but we just built a school here in town that is probably gonna use as much or more energy as the old school that was 60 years old. So I feel like there's can be some better requirements for new new buildings at the MSDA. There's also some products being manufactured in New England, which is great, that are formerly available only in Europe like Glavel and wood fiber insulation. So if we could manufacture wood fiber insulation. So if we could manufacture more of those that a lot of high performance builders currently get from Europe, that would be awesome. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Now I'm going to circle back to Susan who had a first visitor in the beginning of the meeting. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself now.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Susan Tordella. I live in central Massachusetts in Air. And I wanted, I'm a climate activist promoting nuclear. I want to echo what Reiner said about the infrastructure and the cost of that, that we're kind of investing in the Holy Grail. It's, it's not going to save us. So I would like to ask the commission to provide an analysis of the cost of the infrastructure to support wind because it seems like people are against, and there's no land to do the solar. But to provide an analysis of what it will cost to create a deeper port to replace and dispose the wind turbines. All that needs to be calculated and brought forward. Also, how will wind provide grid stability without gas? And our, the goal of the net zero 2050 is to not use any fossil fuels by 2050. So I don't see how that's going to happen using wind and solar. Oh, as far as the workforce goes, I totally agree with that. Except how about some nuclear engineers being trained to provide future low carbon energy or zero carbon energy? So I would like to see the commission, the net zero commission to consider the possibility of using the closed coal plants to convert them to modern, safe nuclear power. And the infrastructure is already there to provide the electricity. So we will have grid stability. So those are my comments and I urge the commission to look deeper on the hidden costs of wind and solar as well as their instability. The, you know, Germany has shown that the using wind and solar does not provide grid stability. It just, it can't be counted on. So thank you for doing this work.
Thank you, Susan. Next, I just want to give Nancy one more opportunity. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Poland. I live in Southampton. Thank you for the opportunity to make the comments. And I really appreciate all of the work, the effort that's gone into all this planning. I like your approach to try and support many types of energy transitions. I first want to say that as many of us have said at other hearings, it's important to really focus on not cutting down forests and destroying farm and forest land and wetlands for solar or for any kind of energy installations. I agree that the Climate Corps, Climate Service Corps is a great idea and to develop courses to teach and train people in service, energy service, but why wait until 2031 to start this? Why not start it next year? We need this work now. I would like to emphasize the need for D O E R to very carefully limit its definition of clean energy to exclude biomass. Biomass heat, biomass energy destroys forests, increases carbon emissions and takes us in the wrong direction. As far as expanding to your D O E R, leading by example in existing buildings, they should be the first and the D C R should be the first to decarbonize all of its public buildings without any biomass heat. And they have plans for doing that. That should be changed. As far as the, the people who are gung ho on increasing natural gas, expanding it across the state and claiming that it's the cheapest source of energy. No, 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 no. And as far as supporting pipeline expansion and using natural gas from the Pennsylvania Marcellus Shale, that is a climate disaster. We need to get off of natural gas and all fossil fuels by 2050. That's a no brainer. Thank you for all you're doing. I will send you some more written comments later. I appreciate the chance to comment.
Thank you, Nancy. There we go. I just want to call on Lenora, please.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So first, I really appreciate these democratic forums. This, this feels like the way it should be that we're in discussion. And I'm going to just focus on the natural land sector because that's what I've been working on as a climate and eco activist and as a health professional for many years. My concern is that there's this delusion of balance that we can balance the use of energy renewables and, and the preservation, protection and regeneration of our, of our natural lands. The, the, the opportunity for balance is long gone. If we had started this maybe 50 to 100 years ago, but at this point, we have lost. There's been so much deforestation, so much ecosystem degradation that we can't afford to lose more. And as was stated about the concern of stakeholders across the state with solar siting because our state subsidies encourages investors to come in and do large ground mounted solar and, and clear cut forests for that. It's happening all over the state and the region and everywhere right now. It's, and so I'm concerned about the timeline that we will have lost all these greenlands before we even get a chance to save them. And I, I'm hoping that there can be some intervention, just some urgent, if temporary intervention to stop that until we figure this out. And I know people hate the word moratorium, but it's, it's just a way to avoid irreparable damage. And it's not only about carbon sequestration or, or wetlands and forests and greenlands. It's about protecting biodiversity. It's about there, they are going to provide the most climate resilience that we have. We're going to have more increasing weather events. And, and so we can't, it's not about balance. It's about stopping, it's about protecting what we already have because it's, it's too late for so much that we could have done before. I do appreciate the cross cutting and enabling policies. It's wonderful to see across the sector of cooperation. I do appreciate all of the things that, that you're talking about. I know that they are ambitious, but we have to be ambitious because we are in so much trouble right now. And I just want to also, I forgot to say, this idea of like new tree planting does not replace the existing ecosystems. Because once you disturb the ground cover, once you disturb the soil, once you disturb the, the mycorrhizal fungal networks, you have disturbed the entire neurobiological, sociobiological ecosystem that, that does a much better job. It's, it's tree plantations and wood products and all of these ideas that we think we can Band-Aid are just not going to work. And, and to please include in your quote, adopting the best sciences available to actively seek out expertise from ecosystem regeneration experts, conservation biologists, forest ecologists, not just energy renewable experts and industry experts and to be wary of input that you get from anyone that has.
Lenora, I don't want to cut you off, but just a reminder.
No, I'm, thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm so sorry to go over. I will be more organized in my written comments. Thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you very much and we'll look forward to hearing your written comments or reading them. Right now, we don't have any more hands raised. I just want to open up the floor. If anyone would like to speak that hasn't had the opportunity to speak yet, please raise your hand. Calling on Paul.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So regarding the tension between reducing carbon emissions through, you know, using solar versus the trees that may have, that may be cut down. I'm not an expert and I would hope that this process will include, and maybe that's already been in the slides and I missed it, you know, some sort of you know, quantitative evaluation of, you know, when you just, I understand there's biodiversity issues to put in for the side for the moment. You know, carbon sequestration lost because you've got less, you know, trees, maybe you still got some grass going underneath the panels or whatever. You know, versus the amount of, you know, fossil fuel burning you've displaced. So hopefully somebody can kind of figure that out on a more sort of a, I don't know, emotional level. I would just throw out the point that I'm not saying it's NIMBY to oppose to solar panels. I understand there are valid concerns there, but we have to remember also that if we're not, you know, generating renewable energy ourselves locally with solar or wind or nuclear, I'll count that as renewable, right? Non-carbon emitting. It's getting done somewhere else and having terrible ecological effects, not just carbon effects somewhere else, right? Whether it's the coal mines and the coal slurry and the ponds that overflow or particularly, of course, the the coal, the tar sands area. So you know, it's, we have to be careful that we're not led into trying to keep Massachusetts pretty and degrading the rest of the world. Where forests, forests will be cut down there or cold sands exploited. So it's not a quantitative comment. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just, don't want you know, the agency here to feel like everyone here is for trees above all costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next calling on Fred.
Hi, I'm Fred Bunger. I'm with the Climate Action Committee in Wellesley, but I'm speaking on my I think the thing that needs to be focused on really is on energy efficiency first. I like the idea of the clean heat clearinghouse. Isn't that basically what MassSave should be doing? The problem with MassSave right now is it's, it's in the hands of the utilities. And when they're doing energy audits, they don't go deep enough. So those energy audits should become decarbonization audits to look at all aspects of the energy use in, in a home or in a, in a business. The second thing you talked about was the metric to be used for measuring how energy is, or how efficient, effective things are. I think simply a metric like the energy use intensity for buildings and homes should be used, which can be converted very quickly into emissions. Again, I laud you for your work. I think people are making too much of the inflexibility of wind and solar. And supporting nuclear is, is certainly on, on the, should be included in the mix. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fred. Next, I'm going to be calling on Lynn. And just a reminder to everyone that we only have the opportunity to listen to each person give testimony once.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for all that you guys are doing. You're dealing with some really, really complex issues and, and I applaud your trying to cover everybody's side. I just wanted to answer Paul in doing the, the quantitative assessment of sort of a carbon for carbon exchange between reduction in of emissions on solar, you know, from solar installations versus carbon sequestration from forests. If you do the math, I've seen people do this mathematically and you can do it in such a way that it, it looks like it's a good idea to cut down forests and put up a whole bunch of solar panels in order to reduce carbon emissions. Of course, that doesn't sequester any atmospheric carbon and that needs to be, that you can't account for that within, in that equation necessarily. But the other thing I just wanted to point out is that it's, it's so much more complex. You know, the trading of, of natural lands for solar is so much more complex than just a carbon exchange. And Lenora had mentioned, you know, mycorrhizal networks and soil health and water purification and all that. And the, and the biodiversity on which we depend for life. This is not a NIMBY thing. This is not tree hugging thing, even though there, there's a picture of me hugging a tree here. But it's, it's what we depend on for a habitable planet. And these are not easy things to quantify or to put into a cost benefit equation. And so it's, I understand that, you know, from a CECP perspective, that this is really, really difficult. But I just wanted to make that point because it's super important. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, I'm calling on Latifah.
Yeah, hi, this is Latifah Ziad from the neighborhood of Affordable Housing in East Boston. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, great. I just wanted to comment on gas versus having electrical energy within the homes. We got an opportunity to do raw data for ourselves using sensors and then using HEPA filter interventions to see the difference between 30 homes and 10 businesses in East Boston. And one of the things that we, we initially used this work to do was to look at like how we were being impacted by the Logan Airport that was close to us. But what we found to our surprise was one of the biggest things that was impacting us on a day to day basis that was exceeding the EPA numbers for warning for particulates was those gas stoves. And so really working to figure out how to get more of those gas stoves out of homes and incentivize the market to have those electric stoves put in place or other heating systems put in place that are more progressive than those gas stoves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, I just want to open up the floor to anyone that has not had the opportunity to speak. Please raise your hands. Cynthia.
Hello. Thank you for having this hearing and it's been very interesting hearing all the different points of view. I would like to second what Lenora Brick and Lynn Mann said about the forests, the importance of living as opposed to a engineered, human engineered monoculture forest. I would like to speak for the state in concert with the federal government putting a lot of resources into rooftop solar, especially helping lower income people. I have a rooftop solar and a battery, a backup battery. And that battery could be used to store energy. You know, just like a battery in a car for, for another time, another day, you know, when you need the energy. So the, the issue of intermittency with renewable energy could, you know, needs to be solved with The the issue of intermittency with renewable energy could, you know, needs to be solved with. Battery and other storage mechanisms still to be developed, no doubt, but. I think a lot of people are working on storage to overcome the problem of intermittency. I I also believe that we have to not have any further. Investment in fossil fuel infrastructure. The idea of putting a pipeline in for fossil fuels now is insane. And we must resist the voices that call for that and we must. You know, continue to press forward for renewable resources. I'm I'm dismayed that people are putting. Nuclear forward again. I know that, you know, it doesn't emit carbon. After the 10 years of the concrete. Is counted for, but you know, those first 10 years, you're you're emitting a lot of carbon, creating concrete to build. Nuclear facility. So that's not going to help us. We need a short term reductions. In the immediate future. So nuclear and also with what's going on in. In the. The West, you know, in. Anyway. In in the event of a war, a nuclear facility is a real problem. So. Climate resilience needs to be. You know, supported, buttressed in every way possible. We need all kinds of. Ways to deal with the climate change that's coming at us. We had a tornado in the town, the hill town. Of Western Mass that I live in in 2017 in February. So climate change is upon us and there's no doubt about that. So those are my main things. Rooftop solar everywhere, practical and no cutting of forests for for solar. Industrial solar facilities, add storage and help help people who don't have the means to. Put up their own rooftop solar, you know, to have rooftop solar. So that each each homestead can be more independent. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you Cynthia. I just want, right now, we only have two people that have, they have also raised their hands, but we would, we can open up for one more minute from Susan and Brian if you guys would like a second opportunity to speak. I'm going to call on Susan. Just a reminder that it is, it has to be short to one minute.
Oh, this is actually Marcia Young. I think I I came into this Zoom invited by Susan, so I could, I kept raising my hand and you weren't. Seeing it, I guess. So I would like to support Susan on the nuclear issue, but I also want to address. All of the people who are so concerned with the solar taking away the solar land balance issue. That nuclear is the the option that you need to look at again. If you're if you're really concerned with with the loss of the land because nuclear has a very, very small footprint. And what, there's a lot of myths about the safety of nuclear. I know Lenore or it was Cynthia just mentioned in in. The risk or the safety features. In a war, but those are are have, those have all been addressed by the. The redesign of a lot of these nuclear plants. So we should really take another look at nuclear. It is a practical, reliable. And look. Modern safe. It's proven and it has such a small footprint that it saves all of a lot of these issues. So that's all I would like to say.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Ben. Like, okay.
And then I'm going to call on Brian if you'd like to have, just a reminder, it's going to be one minute. So please keep that in mind.
Yes, hello, Brian Campbell again. I just wanted to say that I'm very pro-nuclear. That I am sorry that the plan does not include nuclear, that the backbone of the plan is offshore wind. The most expensive. Electrical generation going and. To put it in the area where the endangered right whale. Lives and breeds is not right, especially when you're forcing lobstermen to take precious special precautions in that same area. That limit their catch. And. I just don't see the economics of it. I don't see it. Another thing is, I wish the plan had looked at Ontario. In 2010s. The Ontario eliminated its coal generation. It's smog days in Toronto went to zero since 2014. And the reason why is because they refurbished their can do nuclear reactors. And just recently, this month, they've decided to. Extend their pickering facility, which is three gigawatts of of can do nuclear reactors until 2026. With the the probability of refurbishing those two. When we closed Pilgrim, natural gas was about three. Mega BTU, three dollars mega BTU. Now it's it's six, seven. Eight, nine, and not only that, natural gas is extremely valuable commodity.
Brian, I hate to cut you off again, but we are, we did exceed the one minute limit. On on that note, I do just want to take a second to remind everyone that on the meeting today that all written comments will be accepted via email to GWSA@mass.gov. And there's also a portal that you can find online on the 2050 C E C P mass.gov page that you can submit written comments through as well. These quality feedbacks are important to the plan and we thank all participants today. We do have one more person that has raised their hand. I'm going to call on Helen.
Good afternoon and thank you so much for letting me speak today. My name is Helen Walter-Taranotti. And I'm the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs at the Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Institute. Which represents more than 300 manufacturers of air conditioning, heating and refrigeration equipment. Including the manufacturers of heat pumps, both water source and air source. I wanted to just, first of all, thank you for all the hard work that has gone into working through this this plan. Or the scoping plan and putting that together for the governor's office. I know there's been a lot of discussion today around. Energy sources, but I did want to kind of maybe chime in a little bit about equipment. And so. Just just very briefly, overwhelmingly, I wanted to make a suggestion. That you all are laying down the railroad tracks while you drive the train. And you may want to consider some kind of a group, maybe like a SWAT team or a task force that is able to. With a mix of expertise that's able to look at problems as they arise because there will surely be some bumps in the road. As you, as you move forward in this new direction to kind of pull, you know, pull people together to quickly address challenges as they come up. I know that the goal long term is for the the. For the folks in Massachusetts to continue to have access to affordable, reliable heating. And I think that, you know, certainly we do want to see that. That in order for that to take shape again, that we may need some collaboration amongst different types of expertise to make sure that that's happening. So I just wanted to make that comment and we will provide some written comments as well. And then and then finally, just to again, thank you for all the work that's gone into this proposal.
I just want to thank you, Helen. I just want to give one more opportunity. If there's anyone that would like to, hasn't had the opportunity to speak, please raise your hand. Hi Denise, I'm calling on you now.
Hi, thank you very much. Thank you very much. The last speaker just. Mentioned something that prompted me to make a comment and that is to. Get and have the state to get involved with measuring the quality of the consumer products that are being sold. In the name of renewable energy. I have purchased personally over the past four years. And spent thousands of dollars on equipment for my home that does not work. Or it does not work up to the level that the salesperson implied that it would. And so if if we want consumers to really get involved and commit personally and financially. To upgrading their residential systems to be more renewable and or efficient. With regard to energy, it seems to me that as a state, we need to be doing a better job of ensuring that the products that are being brought into consumers' homes are. Reliable. Thank you so much and I appreciate all of the work that you folks are doing and I've learned a lot from the speakers who have asked questions today.
Thank you Denise. Calling on Lynn.
Yeah, real, real quick, I just want to, I echo what Denise just said because I have just installed. Three heat pumps in my house and they are not working well and I'm kind of worried about the winter coming up. So I think she made a really, really good point. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, as we have no one else that has raised their hand, I'd like to hand it back over to Under Secretary Chang if she has anything that she would like to say before we close out of this hearing.
Thank you very much for everyone who have provided comments and who will provide comments either in writing or other ways. So I appreciate everybody's participation. This is an important step for the Commonwealth, both the near term plan as well as the longer term plan. And we do need everyone's participation. So thank you very much for your inputs and suggestions. And with that, have a good afternoon and hopefully the weather will hold out and. We'll have a beautiful fall this fall. Thank you very much for your participation.